Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Johnson and I am the Chair of this Committee and I call this regular meeting the Measure X Oversight, Citizen Oversight Committee to Order. We're conducting this meeting in person and it is being recorded. The agenda for this meeting is posted on the city's website at www.santa ana.org. Members of the public will have the opportunity to address the Measure X Citizen Oversight Committee regarding agenda and non-agenda items during the public comments section of the meeting. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance wherever you are.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, excellent. Kirsten, can you call the roll, please?
Member Chu?
Present.
Member Louis?
Present.
Member Lugo?
Here.
Chair Johnson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, excellent. And this will be the time for the public to comment on agenda and non-agenda items. And I know that we have at least one person that will want to make a comment. Kirsten, do we have any others?
We do not.
Okay, let's go ahead and go ahead, Ruth.
Yes, hi. So I, my name is Ruth Cosio-Weanis and I am a resident of Santa Ana College for over 50 years. And so I am excited to be here and support efforts of the Measure X Committee.
All right, excellent. And Ruth is a part of our committee but is not as, was unable to be here, present in, onsite. And there are some processes that we have to go through when you're not onsite to participate remotely. And so Ruth, you'll, you know, continue to be on, on, on the call as a, as a member of the public. This is, anyone is able to be on also throughout. So I appreciate having you and excellent. All right.
Thank you.
So let's see, the first item on our, or the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar, which has the, the minutes from our last meeting, which was the, we had the March, our March meeting, because we did not have a June meeting due to quorum. And so if we have a first and then a second, and then we can vote on that, or if there's any, any cleanup items on those minutes. If I could have a motion to approve.
This is Member Lugo, motion to approve.
Excellent, thank you.
Member Louis, second.
Excellent, thank you to both of you. Do we have any, any, any changes to the, to the minutes? Okay, so we can, I think we can call our vote.
Member Chu?
Aye.
Member Louis?
Aye.
Member Lugo?
Aye.
Chair Johnson?
That's a yes for me also.
Motion passes.
Okay, excellent. And so let's see, the next, next item on our, we have a relatively light, light agenda tonight. But our next, next item will be our revenue update, which will be with, with Mr. Trinidad. So just one moment.
We're just, for some reason, we're not recording on YouTube. That's what's happening over here, but we are live on Zoom.
We're live on Zoom, but then.
We're live on Zoom, but it's not on YouTube yet, so maybe. So are we okay? Do we need to redo anything? Or I mean, if it's easier to reduce things, I'm sure we can do that. It was pretty.
No, I think we're on, you know, we're on Zoom. We did have a member join from Zoom, so I think we should be able to proceed.
Okay. Okay, perfect. As long as it's being captured and everything. All right, excellent. So Alex will let you do your revenue update.
All right, thank you. So good evening, committee members. So tonight, I'm going to provide you an update on our Measure X sales tax update for fiscal, fiscal year 2425. So the figures presented tonight reflect the final Measure X numbers for fiscal year that just ended in June 30th, 2025. All right, so this table summarizes the year-to-date revenues that we've collected. So basically, these are the final numbers that we received for fiscal year 2425. So approximately $82.6 million were received for last year. I think I've mentioned this before, but I'll, you know, share this information for new members and for the public. The city receives payments, we receive advanced payments. The first two months represent advanced payments. And then the third payment of the quarter represents a true-up payment. So for the payments for November, February, May, and August, these are considered true-up payments from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, CDTFA. It is worth noting, if you look at the last quarter, sorry. If you look at the last quarter, it is for August, we actually received a lower true-up compared to other quarters. So for the month of June, where you receive something like 6.9 million, for July, 7.4. In August, we received the true-up of 6.3 million. So it does show, you know, challenges in sustaining revenue growth. Prior quarters, you do see the last quarter typically is higher than, than the advanced payments. Did you click on it? No, it doesn't work. Okay, sorry about that. So this chart compares Measure X revenues collected for fiscal year 2425 with the prior year. As shown here, the city did collect $974,000 less than the last year. That's, so that's around 1.2%. While this decline is a modest decrease, it reflects some of the challenges that we're seeing in sustaining sales tax revenue growth due to broader economic drivers that we'll discuss a little bit further in the presentation. So I know you guys are familiar with this chart. It's a revenue reported by reporting period by quarter. So this chart, you know, from inception of Measure X in April of 2019 through first quarter of 2025. So overall, the trend line does show that the revenues have steadily increased over time, with several quarters in 2021 and 2022 peaking more than 21 million. However, if we focus on the most recent 12 quarters, or essentially 2022 through now, 2025, the picture changes. So during these periods, collections have doubled off or show a slight downward trend with the most recent quarter. So this is coming below our prior highs. While the long-term trajectory remains positive, the last three years have shown slowdown in momentum, which ties to the overall economic challenges that we're facing right now. So for fiscal year 2425, Measure X, like I mentioned, we collected $82.6 million, which came in about $224,000 lower than our revised estimates. So these revenue estimates were revised by staff during the mid-year budget update in March 4th, 2024. And this was based on our sales tax consultant, you know, they reviewed it, they looked at the data, and so they recommended us that we revise our revenues a little bit lower. At that time, the forecast was adjusted downward to better reflect, you know, actual collections. The adjustment was largely driven by continued weakness in the city's largest sales tax, which includes auto sales, transportation, business, and industry and fuel service stations. So the ongoing price and elevated interest rates have slowed down growth in these areas. So looking ahead, we estimated, estimated Measure X revenues for fiscal year 2526, which started July 1st, 2025. So this is the current year that we're open. We're expecting or projecting $83.9 million. So it's a modest increase of around 1.3% from the prior year. So. As a reminder, the new fiscal year starts on July 1st, 2025. So. So as we look ahead, there are several economic factors that continue to impact sales tax revenues. First is the tariffs. On imports are expected to slow, slow growth in key sectors such as autos and transportation, as well as general consumer goods. These are, these areas make up significant share of cities' sales tax base. Second, economic pressures remain a challenge. This includes inflation, high interest rates. They're weighing down on business and business households, so this is really reducing disposable income for, for residents and for businesses. And then finally, we're seeing a slowdown in sales, sales growth overall. So revenue projections are definitely modest increases as consumers are spending, continue to spend less, and they're pulling off on like bigger purchases. So that's the update on our sales tax for last year, so available for any questions you may have.
Excellent, I appreciate that. We, let's go ahead and do, do a quick walk, walk around. We'll start my far right with the, with Member Chu.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't really have any questions other than to comment that it's a bit of a sobering picture to see our revenues kind of shrinking little by little. So I'm just concerned about what the future holds in terms of the bigger economic picture. If people are spending less, that means we're generating less revenue. So where will we be next year and the year after? And as we all know, on this committee, Measure X sunsets in a few years. So just a sobering kind of picture, at least from my perspective.
Thank you for that. And it's, it's not a local thing just for Santa Ana. If you look at other cities, they're kind of struggling the same way. You know, people are now buying those new cars. Instead of buying new cars, they're buying used cars, or they're just keeping their car longer, right? And with high interest rates and everything being so expensive, like you said, they just, there's just less to go out and buy things, right? So you're right, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, and it's a little bit, it's a major source of revenue, right? And so we're just monitoring closely, and we do give updates to council on a quarterly basis. So if things change, we always provide feedback and direction, but yeah.
Okay, but, but just to assuage my own fears and concerns, we're, we're not in the same position that the city of Orange is in, correct? Okay, because I'm sure we've all seen the news reports about the city of Orange. They're facing bankruptcy in just a few years, apparently.
Yeah, we've, we have been very conservative in how we've managed the city's finances. And so you may remember that we have that 18% reserve. It's really a risk mitigation fund, if you will. And part of how we calculate how much we need on tap, you know, that 18%, it wasn't just pulling a number out of the air. That was an analysis. What we did was we looked at, you know, one of our most volatile revenue sources is sales tax. It's 35% of our general fund. And, and so we looked at during the Great Recession, '08, '09, how much did our sales tax decrease as a percentage? And what kind of dollar amount was that? And then, you know, grossed it up for current times and then take it as a ratio of our current budget. And so that's part of the reason why we have an 18% reserve. The troubling fact is, so a reserve can help you out in, you know, when you have a fiscal emergency and you need to, you know, you need a, you need to plug a, plug a deficit instead of just immediately canceling a bunch of services. But it can only be a short-term use. And so it's, it's a way to have a soft landing, if you will, where instead of just immediately whipping out the hatchet, you know, you can take a year or two to, to ramp down service levels to get back into balance using a portion of your reserve. So no, we are not like the city of Orange, or even some other cities too. I understand City of Santa Monica is in process of declaring a fiscal emergency. And, and so, but we've, we feel like we've done a pretty good job of, of conservatively managing the city's finances. So when 35% of your revenue is such a volatile revenue source, like sales tax, subject to swings in the economy and consumer spending and whatnot, you know, that, that can be a little bit scary. But we do have, you know, things in place that we can use to mitigate that.
Thank you very much for that explanation. It's comforting to know that we have that reserve fund, even if it's only meant to be a temporary stopgap measure. At least it's there. So like you said, we're not immediately pulling out the hatchet. But I just, I keep reading these reports, you know, I didn't realize about Santa Monica. But I do understand other cities are facing the same sort of issues that, that we are. But good to hear that we're in a little bit of a better position. I, I, I do think that the city of Orange needs a separate reserve fund for repairing that, the circle, the fountain, because it seems like a car is crashing into that thing every couple of months. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, right. It was like last week, another, as soon as they repair it, another car crashes into it. Anyway.
Excellent.
Brother Louis?
Thank you for the presentation. No additional comments from me.
Alex, thanks again for the presentation. It's always very enlightening to hear where the, you know, the fiscal status is of the city. I do have a couple of questions. I just want to understand, when this measure came into play prior to it being voted in to by constituents, how much was the expected revenue that was going to come in per this measure? What was the, what was the estimate?
Yeah, so when initially, initial estimates, when this came out, they estimated that around 60 million was going to be generated by Measure X. So now we're around 82 million, so it's grown more than that. So initially, it was 60 million.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to hear that, because I think the numbers that I had were about 68 million, but that sounds about right. So right now, even though it's not growing in the manner in which we had expected it to, we are still receiving more money today than that which we had expected to come in, in 2019, when this measure came in. During the time of Measure X, I guess reconciling our books, is it natural to expect that fund to grow with the economy? And were the projections from year one being 2019 to year 10, which is going to be 2029, when the first sunset happens and brings us down from 1.5 to 1%? Was it always expected to grow from the 68 million or 60 million to 10 years?
Yeah. If you just applied like a basic CPI factor of 3% to it, it would have grown to about 72 million by now. So we've actually paced ahead of that. But yeah.
So I guess where I'm going with this is, is it fair to say that it, that there might be some value in trying to keep our expenses down to that 2019 level? Where the initial estimate came in and those initial dollars started coming in? Because I know there's a lot of fluctuation with the economy. There's a lot of uncertainty with the economy. But when you look at it from a bird's eye view, we're still doing better than what we expected in 2019.
That, that's a good point. And I think that's been the committee's recommendation in the past to, to keep it, you know, use this funding at one-time costs. For example, you know, for maintenance, this, this building that we haven't maintained for a while, right? Really make those improvements. But, you know, we have added a lot of additional services to the community. A lot of them are recurring in nature. And so, for example, parks have gotten better here in the city. They're cleaner, they're safer, because we have security for them. So things like that get expensive. And again, with those contracts, again, with revenue going up, also those contracts go up by every year, 5%, 4%. Yeah. So it's, it's, our revenue is like, it's not just sales tax with everything else. Everything is growing exponentially, and then our cell, our revenues again are not keeping up. So.
Yeah.
But I, I get your point about like, if we were not to add any additional kind of recurring cost, then we would be, we will still have additional revenue that potentially we could use for one-time in nature.
Well, I, I didn't say that, but that's kind of down the road I was going. You just kind of, you know, let it out, out of the bag. Because the, the reoccurring costs that we're taking on as a city seem to be the reason why this fund is getting stretched, you know? And from my perspective, what I'm looking at is a very valuable asset that's coming into the city that the constituents have, you know, voted for. But at the end of the day, it's getting stretched to a point where now we're not able to, to, I guess, maybe that's not the right word. And what I should say is that it's difficult to maintain with the reoccurring services that we've added to the city that this fund is covering. So how do we get to a point where we're being very cognizant of what this fund is capable of doing? And being more strategic or, or specific on where that, those dollars are going. Instead of them being, to your point, reoccurring maybe more one-time, you know, and those one-time costs, although it's, you know, still going to go towards a fund, I think there's more, you know, for like a better saying, bang for your buck.
Right.
Yeah, in addition to the, you know, trying to, trying to load up the Measure X budget with as much one-time spending as possible that we've done over the last X number of years, based on this committee's recommendation. On top of that, you know, when the voters voted for Measure X, they, they wanted to improve their quality of life. And so when you think about, like, say, the code enforcement officers that were added, and the fact that we have less illegal gambling in the city. We have, as far as we know of, we have no illegal dispensaries in the city. So there's been a lot of cleanup on that front that I think has improved people's lives in addition to what Alex mentioned about the parks just being in better condition and cleaner than they were prior to Measure X. And I think it's important for people to see those, those impacts of what their vote did for them.
I agree. I agree 100% with that. I, I think, you know, I think the argument from anybody that's looking at this, this committee and looking at how the city is spending their money is, what can we do to try to keep that dollar amount that currently is being funded by Measure X into the general fund? That way, the Measure X could be a little bit more dynamic in how it's getting spent on one-time. Because we're going to get to a crossroads where this dollar isn't going to be there. And we're going to have to be able to sell to the city and everybody that's a voter in the city on what it's done in order to even think about being able to extend it past its current lifecycle. If that's a plan, if that's being talked about, it would be hard to justify how the city's spending the money today if that's the way it's going to be spent on reoccurring things that frankly should be part of the quality of life that the general fund does cover, not the Measure X dollar. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the comments, Member Lugo. You know, I think back and, and like, you know, this committee, I think that every year has said, gosh, if we just can take our, take the overage, you know, going back from year one, you know, the overage and just sock that away. I mean, that, you know, that sunset, you know, just like the, you know, the reserve fund, actually, yeah, the 18% reserve fund, you know, provides for a soft landing. I mean, that was, that was what we wanted to do with, with that. But, you know, it's, we, we. Yeah, you know, we still have a couple more years before, before there, but we will, you know, unless things, you know, we're, we'll have to make some changes for sure, especially because one-time expenses, when you're doing it year after year after year, they start to feel like recurring expenses, even if it might be a different project, but it's the same, it's the same bucket of, of quality of life type stuff, which is great, but you know, there, there will be a reckoning at some point. So specific to the revenue side, so I think two, two kind of anecdotal type things, one on the downside, one on the upside, that, you know, as we're reviewing with sales tax consultant and about on, you know, revenue coming in, I would just be cautious on any, on the new, new car sales type stuff, because there's a spike in new car sales right now because of the EV, at least on the electric vehicle side, because the electric vehicle credit is expiring September 30th. And so is, you know, recognizing that, you know, there's going to be a spike here in, in our current quarter that we're in that is probably going to be followed by a decline in the future. So, you know, if the consultant isn't bringing that up and the data is showing, oh, you know, hey, things are looking up on the car side, might be a temporary item on that. And then on the other side of this, I, I'm curious, and I mean, obviously, it's hard to, to nail down on the, you know, hey, what, what's causing decrease? And so just again, anecdotal type thing, when I see the, you know, the timing of, of it, and I think our fourth quarters always are lowest, if I remember right, that's, that fourth quarter ending September or June 30th. But, you know, my, my favorite taco place that I go to, they told me that they've, they're seeing like 30, 40% decrease in sales for, from, you know, multiple areas. I mean, you know, and a lot, a lot of it is, is, you know, people are afraid to go out, you know, from the ice type stuff. And so I'm curious, it'll be interesting to see how, you know, that comes into play to where, specific to Santa Ana, we might be impacted more than other parts of the state when they're looking at, or even county, when they're looking at, when the sales tax consultant is kind of looking at, you know, macro-type trends or, or medium-type trends that, you know, might be, we might be, have more elasticity towards some of those types of events that other cities may not be quite as reactive to. But.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. We did ask our sales tax consultant, just because of, you know, all the ice activity and specifically in Santa Ana, how that impacted our sales tax. They didn't have the data back then, so I think next time then we have a meeting with them, they might be able to tell us. You know, they had a general idea, maybe consumer goods, certain specific industries, maybe we would see an impact. But we'll know a little bit more and see if that, we saw, they saw some reduction in certain areas next time that we meet with them. But that's a good point.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to do my best to buy, to, to buy as much as I can to make up for it, but so. But it's, right, exactly. But I mean, to, to remember Chu's point with, I mean, the, what's happening in Orange, what would have happened in Westminster, I think, if they didn't pass their, you know, it's, all this stuff is precursors, Santa Monica, you know, what is happening, I mean, they're going to be on the verge of, of, you know, unless there's some changes there, or some drastic measures, I think. So, you know, the more that we can learn from our neighbors, I think the better positioning we will be, you know, in, in, in those downturn, downturn sites. A specific question on the 18% for the city that we have, what is this, what is kind of normal? Or do you know what, like, what is Orange is, you know, or Santa Monica? I mean, Santa Monica thing is kind of so, so new.
I don't know if Orange has a policy, but I do know the amount that they have is very tiny in comparison to their general fund. It's nowhere near 18%. I'm actually good friends with the finance director over there. And, and they've, they have been spending down their fund balance and struggling for quite some time. So they've, they've really whittled it down to practically nothing. In answer to your question, what's normal, it's different, unfortunately, I can tell you that it's different for every city. There's a GFOA recommendation out there that a lot of people hang their hat on. But it's, it's really proportionate to the size of your budget. So like, for instance, a, a city like Los Angeles, you know, with, with an enormous budget, 18% would be an enormous amount to keep on reserve and probably inappropriate. So for a place, so the larger budget that you have, it's a general rule of thumb, the larger your budget, the less you need as a percentage of your budget. So one of the cities that I started my career at in local government was Rancho Palos Verdes, a small city of only 42,000. And at that time, I think it had a general fund of somewhere around 40 million or something like that. Well, they kept a 50% reserve. And so the smaller your budget, the higher percentage you should have. So that's kind of a general rule of thumb.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense, because you have a certain, you know, almost every city has a certain amount, no matter what you have to do. The, and you, you know, whether you're $40 million or $400 million, you have a minimum that, no matter what, every year you have to do. But I mean, that, that makes sense. Well, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I am concerned about, you know, about not only our current situation in terms of the, you know, we went down 1.2% this year or last fiscal year, and we're projecting a, you know, a 1.3% increase for our current fiscal year, which is not, I mean, that normally that would be a nothing, right? But, you know, hopefully that, the, you know, the trend line, hopefully, we can, you know, see that go in the right direction a little bit. Because it is concerning. And then, you know, a quick, the three, three to four years will be, you know, forced with some decisions. I'm sure all of us voters will be forced with some decisions to, to what's going to go on there. So appreciate it. Do it. Any follow-up? Appreciate it. Uh, do it. Any follow up questions? Uh, go ahead, member Chu.
Uh, thank you. Um, I know that we discussed this in a prior meeting about exploring additional sources of revenue for the city. Um, like, for example, increasing the fees to rent city parking lot space uh to vendors to hold fairs and in outdoor markets or whatever. I know that would be a a small drop in the bucket, but I feel like anything would help. Um, ha- have we explored that further? Have there been discussions within the city about uh exploring these other sources of p- potential revenue?
Yeah, yeah, we've put some of these things into place. So we've taken the first steps to, like, you might be remembering that we had a conversation about the parking lot at um Bristol Nenjer. And um, the uh, we've we've put the first steps into place to get them there. And then they've just got to, uh, Public Works has just got to do a few improvements, and then they will be on the books for um raising revenue for that spot. Not that I expect it to bring in too much. The city council did uh approve an increase for parks and recreation fees the first time in a few years.
Okay.
So, you know, although these amounts are very tiny, you're correct, they're a drop in the bucket. Um, many of these things we absolutely have chased down and are and have either already put them in place or in process. Um, for example, you might remember that the uh general fund was for quite a few years, to your point, uh, Chair, um, about the one time not looking so one time. And one of those items was an annual subsidy that was being provided by the city's general fund to its parking enterprise for downtown Santa Ana parking garages. Over a million dollars a year for several years in a row starts to look not so one time. We actually did put something into place. Those new parking rates are going into effect on Monday. And uh, so we will close that gap and not have to make a general fund contribution to the parking enterprise. So absolutely, we are chasing down all of those leads.
Like I said, a drop in the bucket, but I think these are conversations that are worth having. And one of the things I appreciate about being on this committee is, uh, for example, the parking rates. I have friends who are frustrated with the fact that, you know, um, downtown parking is more expensive or no longer free. But honestly, the city needs money, and I want to see the city do well, so I'm willing to pay for parking downtown. Uh, if it means that we can maintain some of the services that we have, because, like I said, I I just don't want to end up in a situation like the city of Orange, unfortunately. I don't know what they're going to do. I think they're going to have to pull out a hatchet or something, but um. So uh, there was another question I had specifically about, there was a suggestion about, I'm not sure if it was someone from this committee, about uh, like for profit jail accommodations? This was something that was new to me that I learned from this committee. Is that something that's also still being explored?
So uh, in addition to the parking during this budget process, we also uh provided one time fundings for the jail for uh, it's called stay uh, pay to stay program at the jail, where inmates could, uh, people, they have to serve time, they they could make an election to serve time here, and then we charge them a fee for that. So they're actually, we gave them funding for that, and they're actually working on making those improvements, and hopefully that would, uh, you know, attract more uh, people to use those services. Uh, part of the cost is to make the facility improvements livable better. But also, the other component too is also advertising. Um, I didn't know this, but I guess there is certain magazines that uh could be uh shared uh to like attorneys and things like that, that could be shared to their clients, so. Um, again, that's it's small numbers, but I think it's it's it will help a little bit, so.
Yeah, and the uh chief also just negotiated increased rates. Um, one of our biggest clients for the jail is US Marshals. They they deliver their prisoners to us, and we house them, and uh, we that typically brings in, oh, boy, it was bringing in like sixteen million a year, and then it dropped off to like thirteen million a year, something like that. And um, we just, the chief just renegotiated rates, and so our rates are higher.
Okay.
I think twenty percent higher, thirty percent. Oh, that's great.
Wow, okay. Yeah, that's that's good news, positive news. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's excellent, and I appreciate you, you know, all the small things, you know, as we know, uh, small things over time, you know, add up. Um, and especially when it's multiple small things and and you almost have to just get in a in a habit of, you know, readdressing these things, otherwise you find yourself ten years down the line and not having had anything changed in the last ten years. You're still, but our costs have gone up, so. But um, well, perfect. Uh, speaking of costs and expenses, I think uh our next item uh is back to you, Alex.
All right, so at this point, we're going to talk about our expenditures updates for last fiscal year, twenty four, twenty five. So I want to just note that staff is still a process of closing the fiscal year, so it takes time. So fiscal ends in June, but um, you know, the closing the books all the way through the audit, it it's really up through uh early December. Uh, so the numbers that you'll see in the presentation are may change, just because we're still finalizing the year, so. All right, so this slide uh pretty much summarizes expenditures for the current last fiscal year that just ended twenty four, twenty five. So this is June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So far, we've uh spent seventy three point two million dollars. Um, and also these figures again are preliminary, so they may change. So by categories, uh, so maintaining an effective nine one one response, so we totaled twelve point three million dollars. So this includes funding for additional police officers, uh, overtime, ambulance services uh to maintain response levels. Um, retaining firefighters, so this is a total twelve point six million. And this was primarily related to our contract for fire services, which Orange County Fire Authority. Uh, addressing homelessness, this is uh ended up spending around thirteen point five million. Again, this is covering costs for public safety response for homelessness, uh, navigation center maintenance, and homeless outreach and cleanup services. So this is quality of life team, so which includes P E uh uh planning a building and also public works. Uh, fixing the streets, we spent uh something around two point four million. So this is for supporting pavement maintenance, uh alley repairs and street light improvements and in underlit areas. Uh, for maintaining parks, uh, we spent something around eight point four million dollars. This includes uh park repairs, security a- and staffing for park facilities. And for youth services, this accounted around two point four million dollars. Uh, this is related to recreation programs, uh zoo operations and youth employment initiatives that we offer. And then finally, the major category, the unrestricted general revenue purpose, so that we spent the rest of our twenty one point six million. So this includes depth service for like uh purchase of streetlights, tree trimming, facility maintenance, and contributions to the pension stabilization fund. So this is the one fifteen trust. Uh, so the detailed expenditure report was provided to you with the agenda, um, and it has more details on there. Again, these are not un-audited and subject to change, but these reflect the city's continued effort for public safety, uh homelessness, community services, and then long term fiscal health. So the other side of this is, uh, these are highlights of projects where it hasn't been completed, so, you know, funds are still there. Uh, and so, and the plan is to carry over this money or budget from fiscal year twenty four, twenty five to fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, so the existing uh our current year budget that's open right now. Uh, you know, projects typically, like I said, take more, sometimes take more than one year, right? And so we have to carry over the funds so that they could complete the projects. Uh, in this category, um, this is related to fixing streets and youth services. Uh, we are carrying over uh estimated of around three million dollars from the recurring bucket, and then three point five million dollars from one time funding. Um, on the recurring, you know, we do have recurring monies for traffic calming, for pavement maintenance, for example, it's two million every year. But these are capital projects, and so, you know, it's not like a recurring operating cost, this is like one time cost for like fixing this one street, so. Even though it's coming from the recurring bucket, we consider this as one time, and we'll carry this over. So key items that we quoted here include sidewalks and street repairs of five hundred and one thousand, that's going to be carried over. Traffic calming improvements of one million. Uh, traffics, uh, pavement maintenance of one point five million. Uh, traffic signal projects on Sugar Stream Avenue of one point three million. The Bristol Street Rehab for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then uh for youth, approximately one point five million for zoo related improvements, including the North Hall Walkway Rehabs, and then as well as the ticket boot roof that they're replacing. So these carriers ensure that, uh, you know, previously funded uh projects are completed, and so making sure that they're they're completed at the upcoming fiscal year. All right, so the other one, so on the unrestricted general uh uh bucket, um, we expect to carry over uh about three point one million, uh, consisting of two hundred and twenty seven thousand from the recurring, and then two point eight from the one time funding. Key things include arts and cultures of two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. Uh, city yard projects and maintenance of two point six, so the yard uh had a lot of deferred maintenance in this year. They received a lot of funding to to make those improvements. And then bus shelter of two hundred and fifty thousand. So overall, an estimated of um of nine point six million will be carried over um to fiscal year, but it this is subject to city council approval. Okay, so to close out the updates for expenditures for this year, again, I mentioned staff is still closing the year, so when you see this report in uh December, it's going to be final. Uh, and so with that, also, the auditors are expected to start their uh audits in early in October of this year. So once completed, we'll bring it to the committee in December, and this is when the auditor actually will also come in and be present to you and answer any questions that you may have. Um, and then lastly, um. Yep, so that's the update on this one. And so that concludes my presentation available for any questions you may have.
All right, excellent, perfect. Uh, let's uh go ahead and go sa- same order on on uh on questions. Uh, so there'll be member Chu.
I love being first when it comes to questions. I'm like, oh, I have to come up with something. Um, just real quick, can you specify um what exactly arts and culture event sponsorship is? Like what what the city is spending money on when it comes to arts and culture?
There is quite a bit of things that we do have in arts and cultures. For example, we do have funding for graffiti. Uh, there's a graffiti program that we have, it's related like ar- like artists, artistic type of uh program that we have. We also have, let me.
Oh, like creating graffiti art, not removing graffiti.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, understood.
That's a good question. Uh, so we also have arts and culture event sponsorship programs where Community Development Program actually offers grant opportunities to artists to develop art for the city. Um, uh, but I could get more information for you as to specifically what to do, but from what I recall, this is uh what they do that, what they use that funding for. Mirror, there's, they do murals as well.
Got it. So is this the appropriate time to ask these questions about the specific line items? Or should I save that for December?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Vietnamese community liaison, so what what do they do?
Well.
Um, Tina Lee works in in the city manager's office, and so she um, she wears many hats. So she uh participates in um, I I'm gonna bumble through this a little bit. She participates in some of the uh local organizations, like there's a Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. Um, that uh she, there's Vietnamese events that the city participates in, and she liaises for those. She does Vietnamese translation for the city. Um, she puts, she helps put together an annual Vietnamese Business Expo. Um, there, i- it's quite a few things like that. I would put most of it into the category of like uh, you know, business friendly outreach, um, some cultural activities, uh, some translation activities. And then uh, some, uh, quite honestly, like economic development type activities with the Vietnamese business community. So that's that's the best that I can do for you right now.
Okay, no, I I appreciate that. I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, what their their duties were. Um, sorry, another question. I see here a line item for one full time staff attorney position? Am I reading that correctly? One attorney? Okay, two hundred and fifty five thousand, okay.
So but then um, it's not just the salaries, it's the it's the related uh benefits with that too. And so, you know, workers count, general ability, all the related, all the benefits that not just the regular salaries, yeah.
We have many attorneys on staff, so Measure X is just paying for one additional than what we had previously. And so part of it is um some increased enforcement activities uh requires an attorney in court to prosecute.
Okay.
Um, that that burns a lot of time.
Sure.
Um, so, yeah.
But and when uh we say staff attorney position, is this through the city attorney's office?
Yeah, city attorney's office. All of our attorneys are employees of the city except for our actual appointed city attorney, Sonia Carvalho. She is on contract from the firm of Best Bestin Krieger, B B K. Um, but all of the attorneys that she supervises in our office, they are all city employees.
Interesting.
Mm hmm. Now, you want to apply?
I have in the past. Anyway, that's neither here nor there. Okay, um, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I have no additional comments at this time, but I may circle back. Member Nancy, I think uh you make me feel bad because I always have questions and you have none. I feel like I think I talk too much. Okay, I do have, obviously, some questions, um. Fixing street and youth twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, traffic calming, recurring funding. But in your ledger, amount incurred as of June is zero. Um, can you help me understand that? Yeah.
So for the um out uh the traffic calming, so we do have.
Funding at a million dollars right now, right?
Yep, so we do have a recurring funding of a million dollars, so every year they get funding for that. And so sometimes it it takes them a while to identify projects or even have enough funding to tackle in enough intersections, you know what I mean? So traffic calming, initially, when I heard it, I'm like, what does that mean, right? But it's, you know, things like speed bumps, uh, roundabouts. Uh, some people like them, some people hate them. Uh, those things that, um, you know, the the blinking lights, even the ones that show your speed, right? It's supposed to deter you from speeding. Um, and maybe some people speed just to see how fast they could go, right? But those are the things that they do, and so they haven't spent anything this year, and that's why you see that we're going to carry over the one million. For the pavement maintenance, that one, they do get two million every year for that. And so um, it's really expensive actually to pave roads. Um, last I heard, it was, actually, I forgot, but it was like for every mile, something like three and a half million, if I remember correctly, but I could give you the ballpark figures later, but. Uh, so they spend some money on that. Sometimes it's on design, and then, you know, have to contract that out and bid it out, so, but things that they don't finish, we'll carry it over, and then uh hopefully they'll finish this year.
Uh, by the way, I think those are great uses of city money. Calming down, help people drive, you know, and taking advantage of. Um, honestly, I love the idea of bikes and people walking around. I I try to walk as much as I can, and um the more active the community is, the better off it is, so I I support that. Um, moving on to another question. Um, remind me, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget deficit, that is ten million dollars of our unrestricted. Um, we're still paying down that budget deficit from the fiscal year?
It it's not paying it down per se, so what that means is that your budget, our, the city's budget already had an imbalance baked into it. So just I'll use simple numbers, that means that the city may have been receiving three hundred a year, three hundred million a year, and spending three hundred and ten million a year. So if you want to preserve all of those programs and services that you're spending three hundred and ten million on a year, that means that you have this recurring hole that needs to be plugged, it never goes away, so it's not like debt to pay down. It's just, that means that from that point in time, we were spending ten million dollars more than what we were taking in, and we did not cut those services.
Got you, so that so the Measure X is a stopgap for those services that are, I guess, some, they were created or were in place.
Just just grew over time.
Got you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, and then um, one last question. Remind me what the funding of five A R P A positions, is that the same thing that member Chu talked about, or is that something different? Uh, the third page of the um breakdown, line line item breakdown?
This, um, it's a small amount, right? It's six months of funding. Uh, so what happened there was um our American Rescue Plan Act money from the federal government. That was one time money, and it funded some temporary staffing to take care of some temporary programs. And the city council was very concerned about the money running out, or not running out, but well, it did. But um, the timing of it, you had to, you could only spend through a certain amount of time on these additional staff, and that expired December uh third, uh, December of twenty twenty four. And so the city council, um, they wanted to preserve those jobs for as long as possible and keep those people working for the city. And so they approved an additional six months of general fund funding to keep them on the books through June of twenty twenty five. And so they approved an additional six months of general fund funding to keep them on the books through June of twenty twenty five to give them additional time to either find permanent jobs elsewhere or to transition into uh vacant permanent positions that the city had.
Fair enough. Thank you. Um, excellent. Uh, piggybacking on uh member Lugo's comment on the, you know, that kind of initial ten million, you know, gap. I mean, I could, you know, fast forward this committee uh ten years from now and and it's gonna feel like, gosh, why are we still talking? Why are we still filling this, you know, eighteen years ago? Type of thing. So I'm curious if we, you know, just from a uh, you know, is there a better way to present? Is there a better, you know, to where we can mind it, uh, you know, mold it into just general fund? Because I mean, that's really what it is, is I mean, it was expenses in the general fund that we didn't have the money to pay for at that point.
Um, it's a good point.
Yeah, you know, and because it does make it look like we're still paying something off, which we're really not paying anything off. We just take cut at that point, and it's every year.
It's a good point. So um we actually went back during during that year, and um they really didn't identify what that ten million was. It was, we're just spending ten million dollars more, right? And you're right, it it looks like we're still paying for it, but um, you know, we're open to that, like uh like back then, we did not identify this belongs to. For example, we're doing this program for Measure X is funding for this one thing, right? So uh, it it was just uh, you know, it wasn't identified back then.
Yeah, it's an accountability issue for us because we try to be as accurate with this stuff as possible. It has to muster through, you know, pass pass what other people refer to as audit, but Tim, we we know that it's not that, but yes. Um, so it has to pass pass muster with the auditors. And so it would be disingenuous uh disingenuous of us to just randomly look through the city's expenditures and go ah, we'll swap those things. We'll pick that and swap that and put it on the Measure X roster. So what am I gonna pick? Am I gonna pick my boss's salary? Am I gonna pick? You know, I you you know what I'm saying? So that that's why we've just kept it there because, you know, they like, like Alex said, it was not identified by the city that this this ten million dollar overspend that we're doing as a result of these things, you know?
You could actually, um, yeah, you you can't identify what it's for. In the budget document around this timeline, they did include this ten point, like they identify that there is um a a budget deficit, right? And so.
But I don't think they identified, yeah, any any potential cuts.
Identify the amounts and including the one point five million for planned uh staffing and savings, right? Uh, potentially, but they didn't identify what savings they were gonna reduce. So. But we we have a a ability to trace it to that period of time. So, yeah.
Okay, well, maybe maybe it it makes it more sense to keep it just because it anyways, part of our history of of where you know, where we came from with this also, I guess. Um, so, but I'm sure it'll be a recurring question. So.
I'll probably forget by the next meeting.
Right, oh, a hundred percent. I mean, I
I mean, because I I think we've seen this before as a committee and sorry, I didn't mean to cut.
No, you're good.
Uh, Chair. Yeah. So I did have a question, but I'll wait until you're done. Okay. I think you already answered my question, though, which is um you, we cannot identify specifically what this ten million dollars is is covering. You were just told by the city, uh, yes, we are spending this extra ten million, the end. And then it just sort of sits here year after year after year. Hmm, okay. And there's and there's really no way to to break it down for for folks um who might be reading this at home or even for future committee members? Because you, like you said, you can't really swap things out and say.
Yeah, we we can't just randomly pick from our ledger and go, yeah, that ten million is for that thing. Um, because that's all we would be doing. The the only thing that we could possibly do, and I'm just being honest, is um if we could go back in time, it would take some analysis, but let's say you go back to the prior, I don't know, five to ten years before Measure X, before that fiscal year eighteen nineteen period. And what you do is you look at and see which expenses were growing at a faster rate than revenues. And you can say to yourself, or you can even say if there was something that was added during that time period, like, oh, all of a sudden between fiscal year twelve thirteen and fiscal year thirteen fourteen, we see three additional staff members. Well, we can, we can surmise that maybe those three additional staff members were part of that ten million dollar deficit that grew. Um, that would be the only way that you could really do it.
Right. And the only reason why I'm asking is because for a layperson like myself, it just adds more clarity. But I understand what you're saying in terms of the difficulty of trying to identify exactly what this ten million was spent on. So like, I guess my only suggestion, if I could make one, is maybe tidling tidling it, titling it differently as as other committee members have mentioned, like I don't reoccurring budget deficit from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? I don't I don't know, just so that's um, you know, people at home might understand what this is. Because when I, when you first look at it, like uh Commissioner Lugo, I'm like, oh, we're paying off a debt from twenty eighteen, you know? But no, it's it's a planned budget deficit that just reoccurs every year. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, maybe if we could retitle it or something or phrase it differently. Thank you.
All right, and I um, do we have any other questions? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the explanation on the staff salary. Um, savings not implemented. That was a question that I had, and I couldn't find it. But I do have two others. Um, sorry, executive assistants, what's that line item referring to? It is the next to the last page, one, two, three, four, five lines up from the bottom. One thirty-two, five sixty-four.
And I do want to remember, at at some point, they may have added an additional executive assistant upstairs. So what the executive assistants do is they um, they support both um executives and and city council members. So like the executive assistant that's assigned to me, not only does she provide admin support for me, but she provides admin support for council member Fernandez and also councilwoman uh Fan.
Okay, thank you for that. And so that's a good segue into city council contracted aides. That is on the last page, one, two, three down.
Those those are completely different things. So um, the at a certain point, the city council was uh, you know, they they're very busy, as we all know. And um, they just need a more help from time to time, whether it's doing research on a proposed legislation at the state level or whether it's doing some research on what is that city doing over there, you know? What is what is City of Long Beach doing for that thing? Um, or maybe it's helping to plan uh their calendar for, oh, um, I need to have office hours here and attend that thing there and make that speech there. Um, so kind of, kind of like a jack of all trades, if you will. So each of them contract with with aides to do this. Um, and we felt like that was the most appropriate way to do it instead of them being city employees because they answer directly to the city council member. Um, and so that way, uh, if they were city employees, that wouldn't be the case. They'd be answering to the city manager. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
And just to follow up, I think it's sixty thousand per, right? Yeah.
But some of the council members, some choose to put it all in one basket, you know, with one aide. And some choose to have a few aides at smaller amounts of time each or less money each. So like councilmember Fan, she um, I think she has like three of them and using them for different purposes or whatever. And so they just all work very small amounts of time. Um, whereas I believe the mayor just uses one aide. So.
Are they contracting directly or does the city contract?
City contracts with them.
Okay, on their behalf.
On their behalf.
Thank you.
I think committee member Louis brought up a great point and made me think about something that I'm really curious about, and maybe you could help me walk down this thought. So the purpose of Measure X was to be able to include for public safety homelessness, infrastructure and general fund, right? How do those things that member Louis brought up fall into that box? Maybe that's a rhetorical question, but the reason why I'm asking is because who makes the decision that that cost would go against the Measure X fund? I think that's maybe more the the question I'm asking. Who's making the decision that it's gonna go against the Measure X fund?
Um, well, technically, it is the city manager's proposed budget to the city council each year. But the city manager is responding to uh things that they hear from the city council. Uh, desires for this, that, or the other thing. And then the city manager has to make the call as to how to balance those requests from council members, those requests from priorities from the public and those requests from internally staff identified items where, hey, you know what? We should really be doing this and we're not doing it. Or we could do this better if we had a little bit more budget. Um, so the city manager has to bu- uh balance all of those demands, whether they're internal, external, or from the council. And so ultimately, that's who decides to to put it in the proposed budget. And then the city council makes the decision as to whether or not they agree with that and and pass the budget. And sometimes the city council does not agree with what the city manager proposes in the budget, and they say, no, make these changes here. And we get those during typically our May uh budget workshops, and then we make those changes accordingly. But most of the time, most city managers are pretty good at divining what it is that, you know, the city council wants to see. Um, and then as far as, you know, what category do they fall into? When you looked at the ballot language, there's all those things like what you mentioned, like, you know, um nine one one response times preserving police officers, blah, blah, blah. Um. There was also a ballot category that said, or other unrestricted general fund purposes. And these administrative things would fall into that last category.
I don't disagree with you, and I and I'm nobody to question the public servants that are helping the city get from where we're at today or where we were in the past or where we're at today and where we're going in the future. It's just, I I just realized that the optics look kind of different when you see these line items in the in the budget for this for this Measure X, and they're not being implemented or or I guess the cost isn't being uh implemented towards the Measure X in the optics of where the true spirit of the of the measure is, you know, for the general public. It's the improvement of of the streets, it's an improvement of parks, it's in the improvement of, you know, our general, you know, uh life, I guess, you know, for lack of better words. So I I'm really, I was just curious, you know, um, who's making the decisions? And I'm not nobody to question. I understand, you know, that there is that caveat, you know, for general funds. But um, I just thought the optics look kind of interesting when if somebody were to ask, like member Louis just asked, you know, how those decisions aren't necessarily being made. I I believe in the interest of the public, they're being made in the interest of the member that's asking for those funds or is asking for that service to move on their agenda, not necessarily the homelessness, the public safety, and the nine one one, that that's I guess that's where my concern was at, and that's where my question comes from.
Yeah, and I I can appreciate that. And just playing devil's advocate, you could make the argument that, for example, these aides make the council members more efficient and help them cover more territory in, you know, doing their part to serve the city. So you can look at it from different angles, but I definitely appreciate your position.
Thank you.
Can I just comment really quickly? Um, Commissioner Lugo, I appreciate you asking those questions because I think we should ask questions of our elected officials um to hold them accountable. Um, that's why they're public servants. So I think these are fair questions to ask. And if not you, who else? We are, you know, on this Measure X committee for a reason. And um, so I I appreciate you asking that question, and I appreciate Commissioner Lewis raising some questions too. So that's all.
Yeah, excellent. I appreciate it. Um, unless we have anything else, I think that's uh we're done with that, that uh that item. And we are done with our our uh business calendar agenda. And so um, right, I'm pretty sure, yep. Um, and so um, staff, do you guys have any uh any comments you want to make?
So I would like to thank the committee for attending. Uh, if you, if all of you guys didn't show up today, then we would not have a a forum today. So I appreciate that. And and something else, I do appreciate the questions you guys have. We we like to have that discussion because, you know, Measure X is an important thing for the city. It is around twenty twenty one percent of our general fund revenue, so it is very important. So you know, ask those questions. And sometimes we might not know exactly the answers, and we could get back to you, but um it is appreciated. So thank you.
Um, one of the other things uh too is if you've, the city council agenda for September sixteenth was published last night. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. Um, member two, you might be interested. There's Washington Square Park feasibility on there. Um, but in addition to that, there's also an item for uh an appointment of another member to your committee. And um, that would be from Mayor Protan Vazquez. And so we have uh reached out to that person, even though technically they have not been appointed yet because we expect that to happen on September sixteenth. So the fact that you have uh, remember Ruth, uh, what was her last name? Okay, well, anyways, our our newest member who is online with us tonight, she introduced herself, but she wasn't able to join us tonight. But I'm sure you guys would like to meet her in person, and then we have this potential other member that's going to be appointed on September sixteenth. So what we would like you to do or what we would like is to propose uh, maybe doing a little bit of schedule shifting for you. Uh, I know that last year there was an issue with scheduling our December meeting, which of course is a very important meeting because that's where you receive some of your annual reports. And so what we may want to consider is kind of splitting the difference and maybe having another special meeting in the nearer future, sooner than December, so that you can meet your new toist members and and, you know, have some lively discussion. And I'm sure we can find something to um provide you some more information on because we love to do that. And um, and then maybe instead of a December meeting, then maybe we look for those annual reports to be done, say, like in a January meeting, much like what was done last time. So we're not going to put you on the spot tonight. But I uh think what we'll do is have Kristen reach out to you, take some polling, and maybe we might look at something like an October meeting and a January meeting or something like that. Um, so if that makes sense to the committee, that's how we'll roll with that.
All right, excellent. And now it's our turn. So let's go ahead.
Would a November-January meeting schedule be okay? Are you thinking like October-January? Just just curious. October is a really busy month for me.
Kristen will poll you all.
All right. Sorry, wrong time. Okay, story of my life. Um, just a general comment. I know that we've talked about this multiple multiple times before, but advertising Measure X. I remember when I was at Jerome Park a couple of months ago, um, there was a sign that said brought to you by Measure X. Has the city ever, maybe the city already does this, but um, you know, the city sends out like uh weekly or monthly email updates. I'm signed up for those. I don't know if if other committee members are. What about putting that, something about Measure X in there? Any any project that Measure X touches, maybe the city email could say, oh, by the way, there's a new park going in on Flower and Tenth Street, brought to you by Measure X in the email. Um, also, um, our fabulous Cultura magazine that comes out quarterly, like could maybe throw something in there as well. I'm just thinking I don't know if anyone is gonna take up this position, but you know, is potentially maybe asking voters to vote on, you know, something in the future about extending Measure X or or you know, ensuring that we still have the same level of services ten, twenty years from now. So anyway, I was thinking that might help in terms of really blasting the city about Measure X and what Measure X provides. Because as you pointed out, um, it makes up about twenty or twenty twenty one percent of our general fund currently, right? That's a huge chunk.
Thank you. Those are really good ideas. I wrote it down. Now, sure, those are public works. I know more recently, they've been doing more of that, like uh earning funded by Measure X, right? Because we want to get the word out there. So.
Right.
But I I agree. I think we should do more because you want you want to have people you want people to see the what's being funded and what those tax dollars are going to. So.
Like, for example, Fiesta Spatres is going on this weekend in downtown Santa Ana. Were there any Measure X dollars that went to that as part of like, you know, the the cultural and arts funding? I I don't, if even one dollar went to the program to to this event, I would slap Measure X all over it. You know what I mean? Brought to you by Measure X. Um, you know, in in physical signage, in emails, in the Cultura magazine, just so that, you know, residents are aware. You know, in, in physical signage, in emails, in the Cultura magazine, just so that, you know, residents are aware, like it's, it's really important. So.
Yeah. Thank you for those ideas. They're all great ideas. And to, just out of curiosity, because I know that you'll run across this because you pay attention. And many of our bus stops have, you know, Measure X information on them. That is going to get changed out like, like soon. And it's just due to the city's priorities right now. And so those are going to get changed out to know your rights signs. For what is important to the community today, but at some point we will segue back to the other.
And I understand that. I, I just think that for some folks who might not necessarily walk by Jerome Park or walk by a bus stop, for example. They're just driving by down Bristol, that maybe we could reach them in other ways, like through, through emails or through the magazine. You know, I, I have a lot of neighbors who read the Cultura magazine. I read it myself. So I'm just thinking about other ways to sort of get the word out there regarding Measure X and how important it is. Thank you.
Thank you. No comments from me.
Just want to thank the committee for being part of this committee. I think, you know, you're taking up some of your time, of your day, of your quarter. To be here is awesome. And thank you very much for, to staff for keeping us in line. Great suggestion. I think it's a wonderful idea to come in before December because December is a lot harder to, to schedule. And then coming back in January, I think is great. So October and January, I'm all about it. And again, thank you very much for keeping us engaged and informed and fed.
Yeah, excellent, excellent meeting. I appreciate the, the updates. And even though it was a, a very, I would say tactical meeting, it's, it's worthwhile. And I think it's a great idea to do a, I'll tag along on November type meeting. You know, especially with two, two additional members coming on board. Even, you know, I think we, we, we were all the new person at one point, right? And so like just even, what are we looking at? What is like? We know we pay sales tax, but what is the, you know, just some of the, some of those types of things are, are great. I think we all, even though we've been doing this a while, we all struggle with it. Yet alone when it was our first, first, first meeting. So I think that'd be, that'd be good to just get, you know, maybe even, you know, take some opportunity to just explain some of those basics again for all of us, but especially those that will be attending for the first time. So super appreciate it. And with that, I think we are done. So much appreciated. Bye bye.